Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, May 20, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the City of the Asbury Park Planning Board. Vice Chair Gunnin, will you please call this meeting to order?
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to The Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the Houston West sides of council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of this meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I will take roll call. James Bonanno?
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton is absent. Eric Galbo?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman? Jeremy Hoffman. Mayor Moore?
Here.
Daniel Shanameo?
Here.
Jennifer Souter?
Here.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Here.
And Chairman Barbara Kerzak is absent today. Okay.
Did you get Jeremy?
I did, yes. All right, we'll start with the minutes. Jack, do you want me to roll through the?
Sure.
Yeah. First one up is the minutes for approval for the annual reorg meeting. And I'll just call you out if you're eligible. James Bonanno?
Oh, this was, sorry, this was the one where there was...
Oh, we just made, there were typos in the January 22 meeting minutes. And Mike and I just made a few edits. I also had...
It was just who was appointed as temporary chairperson, board attorney and secretary was Barbara Jack and I.
They were, yeah. And Jim actually had a few edits earlier today as well that I made that are, there were basically like typos, like, er, basically simple spelling or incorrect tallies, but we fixed that. But I'll start with that one with edits that we just corrected, and that'll be James Bonanno.
Yes.
Eric Galbo?
Yeah.
Yep. Jim Henry?
Yes.
Daniel, you were not. Jen Souter?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Gunnin?
Yes.
Okay. So, regular meeting, February 5, 2024. And that would be James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman, absent. Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo?
Yes.
Jen Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Yes.
Okay. Onto the regular meeting at 2:26. James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton is absent. Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo?
Yes.
Jen Souter?
I had a quick question.
Yes.
On that one, where it says Exhibit B2?
For 226?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a discussion of generator, and it's a review of report. And then I thought the question was asked, what was the project doing to pursue Green Building? And then Mayor Moore was a response, but it seems like something's missing there.
That's, so that's 226, right? 226. Jack, just make that change and then add to the next.
Sure. If you can make a change now, do so. Announce it.
I think I'll, we'll just shuffle it to the next one. I'll fix it.
Okay.
Okay. Regular meeting, March 4, 2024. James Bonanno?
Yes.
Jim Henry? Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo?
Yes.
Jen Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Yes.
Regular meeting of April 15, 2024. James Bonanno?
Yes.
Eric Galbo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo?
Yes.
Jen Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Yes.
And lastly, the regular meeting at May 6, 2024. James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton is absent. Eric Galbo?
Yeah.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Yes.
And that's it.
Next thing on the agenda for tonight is consideration of an amendment to the CBD redevelopment plan.
Hello. Okay, so folks, tonight, I'm here to review the CBD redevelopment plan amendment. I do. Sure. My name is Elizabeth McManus, M-C-M-A-N-U-S. I'm the city's planning consultant.
Your credentials have already been put before the board, Mary Lynn Collins.
Okay, great. So this evening, I'm here to review the draft plan amendment. The board, of course, has two, there's really two questions set forth for you. The first one is masterplan consistency for this redevelopment plan amendment, and the second is any other comments the board might like to make on the amendment itself. What I thought I would do this evening is similar to what I've done in the past, although this is so much more limited, I did not do an actual PowerPoint presentation for it. But I thought I would provide an overview of what's in the plan, and then we can talk about any comments that the board might have.
Excuse me. As a matter of procedure, do we have a referral resolution to add in as an exhibit?
We do. So Exhibit...
It'll be B1 or C1?
C1.
Yeah. It's the Resolution 2024-239. That's the referral resolution from there and council and board. Okay. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. So the redevelopment plan amendment is really quite simple. This is a single property amendment. It's for 614 Cookman Avenue. What's happened is we've had a request from a potential tenant and property owner to incorporate one new use into the redevelopment plan specific for this property, and that new use is a sound recording studio specifically for sound, music, video production, mastering rehearsal, and supporting uses. I want to note that it does not permit live performances on the property, and so when we're talking about sound recording, it's really intended for, for really recording for commercial purposes as opposed to doing performances for audiences and the like. One other part of the redevelopment plan, the permitted uses, that I think is really important, is a requirement that for 25 feet along the, along Cookman Avenue, it shall be occupied with ground floor permitted uses included in the redevelopment plan. And they include, and the expectation is that that's going to be a retail use associated with the recording studio. The potential tenant has indicated that it's likely they'll operate a record store, and I don't want to suggest that that's a requirement, because you'll, you'll see that it's not, but it does require that one of the ground floor permitted uses be located in that area. And so the overall concept would be retail on the first floor facing Cookman Avenue with the sound recording spaces as permitted, as well as other permitted uses on the upper stories. And so I think what we're likely looking at is retail on the first floor with sound recording as well as supporting office uses and the like on the upper stories in order to support the recording studio. And so that's the permitted use. But in addition to just simply permitting the use on the site, the redevelopment plan also goes through and sets forth a handful of additional standards. And all of these standards are intended to address any potential noise concerns coming from the property. One of the, one of the concerns that council has expressed about this and other uses in the city is the potential to serve as a nuisance for residential neighbors in the area. And so what we have here are four standards that are intended to, to help address those concerns, with the first one being simply that a redevelopment agreement be put in place prior to certificate of occupancy. The next is confirmation that the sound mitigation standards already listed in your redevelopment plan will actually apply to the site, because of course, this is not the first recording studio music location located in the CBD redevelopment plan area. It states that the exemptions to the sound mitigation standards do not apply to this property. And then the last one is a specification for construction to ensure that any of the recording spaces truly are soundproof, if you will. And so what it requires is a sound transmission class rating of not less than 55 for any partition walls that's going to enclose a recording studio. And that is a, a construction specification of wall type essentially that's intended for uses such as this, uses that need sound mitigation because they're engaged in sound production and recording. And so with that, that's a very brief overview of the redevelopment plan, but quite honestly, there are only a handful of paragraphs located in there. And so as I said at the outset, I think that if the board has any comments that they'd like to offer, I'm happy to, to listen to them. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about it as well.
So the recording studio is going to be on the upper floor, it's not the ground floor?
Correct.
But, so the retail space?
I don't think so.
It's not part of the recording studio?
That, I guess, on the first floor.
It's, I'm sorry, it's, Cookman Avenue, first floor is retail. The sound recording spaces will be located to the rear and, as well as to the, on the upper stories as well.
What are the spaces that are going to be on the... I guess, two stories, three stories?
It's like, it's two stories and a mezzanine as well, two or three stories. So I have a, while I have a ground floor pla, or I have floor plans that were presented during a council meeting, this redevelopment plan, unlike others, does not have a required floor plan that must be constructed. In other redevelopment plans, I've come before you, where we have architectural renderings, for example, and say, this shall be constructed. That's not the case. This is really just a regulatory document that permits a use.
But, so, is there anything about being residential use on those upper floors at all?
No.
No allowing?
No, there's no residential use that's anticipated as part of this plan.
The residential uses adjacent abutment of this property?
There are residential uses, yeah, there are residential uses right in the area. There are some abutting uses a little bit down on...
Do they, do they abut, do they abut the property?
To the, to the, to the east, yeah, to the east towards the water, you would have residential uses on the upper stories.
And I thought you said, I believe you said this, something about certification of how we construct?
Yes, it requires a specific wall type. There's a construction specification for walls that are intended to enclose recording spaces, for example. And so that has been specified in the redevelopment plan.
So, does the city then get some certification? Is there some testing of actually, is it just a certification that, yes, we constructed this exact, or you actually tested that we contained sound and you get certifications of that effect?
So a couple of things. During the construction and fit-out process, the developer will have to submit their floor plans. On those floor plans, it will have to demonstrate that they're using the proper walls, that STC 55 that I specified. And so that's, that's one aspect. But in addition to that, your redevelopment plan also has sound requirements set forth in there where it requires a, a sound mitigation report, I'm sorry, that's not quite the, a sound mitigation application, as well as a report that must be submitted in order for them to demonstrate that, that sound has been properly mitigated, and there's also testing that would be required as well.
So somebody actually tests it, and this is certification, you cannot report?
That's... Yes, it's, yeah, they have to have a sound report authored by a sound engineer and also reviewed as well by the city.
Thank you. (Inaudible) part of the, those amended here allows the recording studio to operate from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So I'm curious, I'm here, this process, can it be that standard limit each of hours? Or is that a different set of hours? Like, my concern is if the sound, if there's neighbors, and there is a concern with the sound emanating, being the sound frequency isn't as perfect as the neighbors want it to be, 10 o'clock, you know, might come in issues. I'm just curious, is that standard for this type of thing, or is that...
Well, I don't know, there's a, there's no statewide standard, but I will say that one of the things that we did was, was limit some of the, some of the hours of operation. So, for example, if there are sound concerns, we don't have anything going to, say, 11 o'clock or midnight. And so that was one aspect that the redevelopment plan wanted to, council asked to address, to make sure that if there were sound concerns, at a minimum, it's not extending late into the night.
So is the 10 o'clock cutoff like a typical hour that the city council uses?
Actually, I think it's, it's later than that for sound perform, for performances elsewhere.
(Inaudible).
Correct.
All right, 10 o'clock is what we use for live music outside.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, correct.
Is, is this particular site unique to, for a recording, a sound, sound recording facility? Is this anything?
Physically, I don't know that there are any physical attributes. I mean, I'm sure there are some that attracted the potential tenant to the site, but I don't believe this building is so unique that it, that it particularly lends itself to sound recording, and that's part of the reason why we have additional standards set forth in here, such as the partition wall standards, to make sure that, that the building can be fit out to, to provide proper mitigation.
Well, I would think that in order to get a CEO, the tenant would have to demonstrate that the sound has been mitigated in accordance with the standards that are already in place. And also, it would be, I think, to the tenant's benefit to have it soundproof. Sound travels both ways. If you're having a recording studio and you're having a session, you don't want somebody on the outside, you don't want somebody going down Cookman Avenue and blowing their horn and spoiling whatever, whatever it is you were attempting to record. And this is not the first one that's come before this board. I would, if, if we're going to consider this, I would like to see the, this become a permitted use in the entire district. You know, we've done this, this is maybe the third or fourth one that has come before us, and if that's going to be a trend, why not? I don't see a downside in making it a permitted use throughout the whole district.
I think that if, if the board wants to make that common, you're certainly welcome to. I think your point about this being a sound recording space, which is perhaps different than a live performance space, is, is really accurate. One of the things that, that I've heard from the potential tenant is they also have sound mitigation concerns for exactly that reason, for fear that if, if their sound is traveling out and disturbing neighbors, that means that neighbor's noise is potentially traveling in and disturbing their, their customers' sound recordings.
So, is this meant to put, what Jim just said about allowing it in the district? This is...
This is for a specific...
(Inaudible) for the CBD?
This is, yes, but for one specific property.
Just for the...
Just for 614 Cookman.
Okay.
Yep.
How, how do people feel in general about making a recommendation for, do we want this to be for the district? I know there's multiple segments of the CBD within the redevelopment plan, or a separate site.
I, I think the nature of the use requires specific consideration, because so many buildings are different, some could have residential above, some don't, some have residential next door, some do, you know, like, so I think it's, this is the kind of thing that we just need to look at each one.
So it's funny, when this first came before us, my first thought was the same as Jim. There's already, other recording studios, if we're going to keep permitting them, why not just do it all at once? But I, I actually really agree with you. There's so much heterogeneity, heterogeneity in the CBD, I think we have to consider site by site.
And then case by case, I suppose.
Yeah.
I mean, I, maybe we could set forth, ace, the standards for the whole district, so that we're not negotiating that every time that we're, like, every time we say it's the same standards for noise intrusion or, you know, decibel level and, you know, hire the acoustician and get the certification, but like, we still say, we still need to approve the location. That could be one way of simplifying the process, because you're essentially asking us to sign off on the requirements too, right? The, it's not just the location, it's the standards.
Yeah, the additional standards set forth, yeah.
So I mean, I think that might be a good way of doing it, is, these are the standards that would govern the entire, but each application for a use like this still needs to come.
And are these the same standards that have been approved previously for, for site-specific use?
They are, but they're enhanced, so I would say, there are a couple differences here, so, so let me, let me restart the answer. These are enhanced standards. So for example, it, the sound mitigation standards already in the, in the CBD plan, those certainly have already been applicable to other properties, but here, we have something that prohibits live performances, we have a limitation on hours, and then we have construction standards as well as a redevelopment agreement that's required. So it really takes what was already set forth in the CBD plan for other properties and takes the sound mitigation concerns and other couple steps forward.
I think that's actually a good idea, because what it does is it creates predictability. So let's just say you have a recording studio, B, who comes along and is shopping around for a landlord, and essentially, there's predictability there for them too. These are the standards we have to meet, these are the hours, these are the things we can do, and there's no negotiation about that, but it's the locations that we'll be negotiating over.
If I may, when we consider the sound mitigation ordinance from the city a number of years ago, it took a couple of years, we had sound engineers and all the like, so if we develop any additional standards that are specific, we would need to consider, there's some scientific data that we have to consider. And there's already a whole body, no study that was, went into the city, the city sound mitigation ordinance as well. So we just don't make recommendations here, off the cuff, so to speak, as to what, because there's already...
But these are more stringent than those standards, correct?
But we don't know, we don't, we have to do that in a scientific way, right? If you're going to, if you're going to set standards, they have to be exact in standards and they have to be quantifiable. They have to be based on something.
But you're not, you're not suggesting a sound mitigation standard, you're suggesting a, a use standard for a recording studio use?
Yeah, like, no live performance, no, yeah, like, all of the things that Beth is saying within here, which creates some predictability around the use being at least considered, and here are some parameters, but now we have to still go for this location, and it kind of creates...
The city council, on the, on the government pageant, is, they definitely outline some of those.
Yeah, that's exactly it. And I think maybe we want to figure out what we can apply as a standard within the CBD, that still leaves room for us to do the site-by-site consideration, and it's not necessarily the mitigation standards, but...
I mean, one thing I will say is that it seems like this, this application for a plan amendment has really built upon previous applications for plan amendments, and presumably this one will do a better job of protecting neighborhoods, neighbors than the last one. And so we, if the council passes this, what we really have is a model, should somebody else come forward. We already know what's important to us. We've already been able to troubleshoot some of the problems of the past with some enhanced standards for this particular application.
I think we're saying the same thing.
The discussion about, you know, making it a permitted use for the district on a case-by-case basis, now I'm more familiar with you, do we use special permits here? Like, you know, where it's only used by, you know, getting a special permit?
I, I think sometimes people relate the special permits in other states to conditional uses that we have here, where it says you're, this use is permitted if you meet the following standards. And so that's a, it's a common technique. I don't know that that's a permitted, that that's something that is permitted in a redevelopment plan. I've heard, I'm coincidentally working with an attorney in another town where they're objecting to that provision in a redevelopment plan, so I think that that may be a problematic, perhaps a legal provision. But I do like the idea of enhancing the standards here, knowing that it's available if the council decides to apply it to another site, and if the council decides to open up recording studio use, which may or may not be differentiated from live recording spaces, they have these standards that they can pull from.
So, Eric, can I just ask, if we were to make a recommendation to the council, how would you, how would you word it?
I think I would say that the, you know, the non-acoustic standards could be uniformly applied, you know, that no recording studio will be approved if it's, the hours aren't this and this, and no live performance, and that, you know, like, just cuts out all of the, you know, because then you don't, then, then you won't get people coming and saying, well, I want this special exception, and I want this special exception, but what we're looking at is the site that they, like, primarily looking at the site. Or, and any enhanced acoustical standards they would need for whatever their particular cases.
So is a recording studio allowed to be used anywhere in the city?
No. It's, oh, I'm sorry, it might be, I would, I need to confirm in the B district, I don't recall if that's permitted, but I know it's not permitted as a general use in your CB district, CBD district, for example.
But it's, it is a permitted use somewhere in the city?
Is permitted on specific, in a specific property, but a recording use as a, as a general use that's simply listed as a permitted use?
Use it as only...
Yeah, I, I don't believe so. I don't recall if that's listed in your B district, I would need to confirm that, but, but I don't believe it's permitted in any other district.
So it is always on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, if it's, certainly they would need to request a use variance otherwise, or a redevelopment plan amendment.
If the restrictions that are being discussed now for this particular site are approved and within the, within the ordinance approving this, it would seem to me that, and that, that's fine, but it should apply through every, excuse me, every location within the CBD. It doesn't make sense to me to approve this on this site basis with these recommendations and then not approve it on another location within the district. It just seems to me that that is a waste of resources for the applicant and for the board. And I hardly, I hardly, wholeheartedly recommend that we approve this application, but ask the council to extend it to the entire district.
Okay.
Everyone comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. (Inaudible).
Does anyone have any other questions for Beth?
Eric? If I may, let me see if I can help a bit here. Just consider, as part of these recommendations, of course, what's here, but you consider adoption of uniform standards. That's what you want, you want uniformity, so you get fair application across the board, or, or, in the areas such as hours of operation, construction standards, application of the existing sound mitigation ordinance scheme, as well as the testing standards.
And prohibition of live performance for all of this.
Okay. You should set that as minimum standard.
Well, that's not a minimum, it's just a yes or no, no live performance. That's the point, is...
Well, some of them are minimum, like the sound transmission class rating.
Okay. We got it.
Yeah, I think it's sort of like, this is...
I have a, I have a silly question. Does the, does the walls include the ceilings?
I, hold on, let me just confirm.
Does the walls include the ceiling?
Yeah, for sound, for the ceiling, yeah. Do I contain it this way but not vertically?
I'm going to say that typically in recording studios, it's essentially the construction of a box within a box.
Yeah.
Just to make sure that...
It's all recording and performance spaces shall be enclosed, yeah, by partition walls.
That's what I thought.
And...
That's fine.
I don't see anything about recording studios in the B district.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if you make uniform standards, you don't have a... I'm just saying, in the future, if you... I'm just saying, in the future, if you consider it again, we would recommend following. We're making recommendations to you, Beth, which that's what for.
Can I share a couple master plan goals with folks that I think might be on point? So there are a couple of goals in your master plan that I think are really on point and related to this. In general, the city has a, has an overall, one of the themes, if you will, in your master plan is to promote art and culture. And so as I look at your planning goals, there are two that I think are particularly noteworthy. One is to encourage art and culture activities and installations in the city's mixed-use and commercial districts that contribute to quality of life for city residents, cultural diversity, and economic development opportunities. Another is to encourage a diverse economic base that relies on year-round activities in a variety of economic sectors, including startups and entrepreneurship, such as, but not limited to arts and culture, tourism, retail, healthcare, light manufacturing, and technology. And so I think those two goals really address the desire to expand uses, to include another art and culture use, and to really bring a new business activity to the city. And so for those reasons, I don't think that your master plan is inconsistent with this amendment.
It's permitted use in the light industrial zone.
I'm sorry?
It's a permitted use in the light industrial zone.
Thank you, thank you. I didn't catch that before.
To the standards that you have listed here, should the requirement of the street frontage be included in that, in the standards? In other words, if anybody else applies, they know off the, right off the bat that they need to have the first 25 feet of their space retail in accordance with the master plan?
I think if it's, if you have another studio application in a location where the city's looking for active uses, like for example, on Cookman or in some of your other retail districts, I think that would make sense. And I know we're talking about redevelopment, but in the CBD, but I can imagine the light industrial district, that might not be applicable. But throughout the CBD district, I think wherever you're permitting and encouraging retail and restaurant uses on the first floor, that would make sense.
I can't think of a situation where it would be in conflict with the master plan.
I can't either. I've looked through your master plan goals and I really, I don't see anything that's inconsistent. I think there's language in there speaking against nuisances, as you might expect. But I think that your redevelopment plan standards in there, the enhanced standards, do an excellent job of addressing that concern, especially for a use which is not going to include live recordings for an audience.
Does anyone else have any other questions for Beth? Questions from the public? No? I'm going to make a motion to open for comments from the public.
Second to that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close.
Second.
See you in the public.
All right. Okay, so we have to do two things here. We have to decide, one, is this consistent with the master plan? And then two, if we have any comments on the, whether this is consistent with the master plan, does anyone have any concerns? Nope. And then as far as comments we might want to make to the council, Jack, what do you have?
I have, I outlined the, sort of going, making this list a little more extensive, that hours of operation be applied uniformly, future standards, detailed application of the existing sound mitigation ordinances and testing standards. So not only do they have to meet the ordinances, but also the testing standards once they're kind of make sure that. Prohibition against live performances with ordinances. And whatever else is on this list, these four books.
So I guess, we're not making any, I guess we all agree with the standards that are in here, right? We're just recommending that these be--
I don't think we know enough of that.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Nobody here is an acoustician.
We are not recommending to the council that they need to change any of the standards. We're just recommending that these standards in here be applied uniformly going forward to future.
Yeah, the non-quantitative standards.
Yep.
I got it.
I'm on board, yeah.
We're good, but we might make the other, these recommendations, that might be helpful.
Yep. Are people on board with that? And then Jim had a recommendation, that we apply this uniformly to the CBD. How do people feel about that?
I think we still need to look at site-specific applications because of the lack of uniformity between residential and commercial spaces. You know, it's not, you don't have whole blocks of just commercial. They're very mixed. And so a building like this, it's easy to imagine a portion is going to be used for a recording studio, but a much smaller building might have a harder time with the mitigation and the other things that, you know, bands loading in now. This could be, you know, I don't know, can you have a 40-piece orchestra? It looks large enough.
I agree, I think it gives us more control.
I think so.
I tend to agree as well. Anybody else? Okay. So, okay. So, and any other comments that people have? Okay, so can I, so where are we now? We're saying this is consistent with the master plan. We're going to make the one recommendation that Eric proposed. We're not going to recommend that it applies to the whole CBD. All right, I'll make a motion to recommend, what am I saying, Jim?
You're making a motion to recommend consistency with the master plan. And these are additional considerations that you might want to look at of all the ones you've listed in the ordinance that we just outlined.
All right. So moved.
Second move, sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah?
Second.
James Banano?
Yes.
Eric Alpo?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
I feel strongly enough with my comments concerning the entire district. Even though I support this particular application wholeheartedly, I'm going to abstain.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Daniel Shanameo?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunean?
All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.